Thank you, Jan. Thanks for the presentation. So as Jan said, this is just the thought stage still. Richard asked me and I said, "Well, you know, think about it." And so I did. I mean, no seriously, this is not the paper. It may become the paper at some point, but I still have the time to put here a story, but I'll tell you what I have. Okay, so what's the lecture about? I'll try to make connections between, before I go causal inference literature, statistics and economics, objects of interest in economics I've worked on or any of you who may have worked on, intercomience literature. And more importantly, the goal that I'm relating is... In statistics and some economics, causal inference is usually tied to an action applied to a unit, I try to be a little bit more precise here. An action applied to a unit, so you can think of it as an intervention, a treatment, manipulation. It can be a mental exercise, so you don't have to think about... You know, you could think about the treatment of moving the bird around its orbit, so even though you cannot manipulate it, but it's still something to think about. The question usually in these literatures is extremely narrowly defined. It's one of, usually of evaluation, but it's very precisely letting you know, so what's the impact of zero versus one, taking the drive versus the nine? In economics of games, we also posit response functions, which, you know, we call them different, depending on the model. There are production functions, demand and supply functions, best responses in general. And they answer a lot more broader questions. Of course, if you have a utility function, you can answer a lot of things. But more, you know, in particular, the response of question that's asked here, you easily get this excuse. So, one, the impact of the rates, price can be not true. This is the response to just demand, if you estimate, and then you get the results. One problem is that thinking of this in the causal language of statistics here can differ drastically from the semitnaity and simulation theory. So, the objective of this talk is to show you that when there is semitnaity, the causal framework of this counterfactual notation, all the language that comes with it, actually doesn't lead to get too much. And the way it doesn't get too much is in relationship to the data in the presence of semitnaity. This is the whole talking volume this morning. So, I will review the counterfactual notation, that will be very quick. What the science is versus what you can do to learn from the science. This is well within what economists have been doing and continue to do, of course. I will illustrate this exercise, how, in fact, it gets complicated on the semitnaity's presence. And for me, semitnaity really indicates multiple decision makers, because we're talking about games. It doesn't have to be only there, but that's where I focus on. This also links, and I add a section at the end, on social interaction-like models, which are extremely popular, where you regress your Y or other people's Ys, and models like that. And there, I ask myself, "What's going on?" How do we put that in terms of games, causal inference, and so on? And I just gonna, again, warn that most of this is, there's a few theorem here, so some things are quite rough, but a lot of it is still in the class stage. Okay, so what are we here about? In the causal inference literature, there's a response function, and usually it's called potential function, because it's defined even at counterfactual treatments. So it's a function that, it's a well-defined function that maps treatments well. This is crucial. What's crucial here is actually being a function, so you can't have, given a treatment, you can't have multiple outcomes, and so on like that, because every time the treatment comes, then you can have... A crucial element in this, I said this earlier, but a crucial element in this literature is assignment mechanism or equilibrium model, that tells the story of how people were assigned to different treatments. So, in an extreme version, it is randomized experiments, people can be assigned to treat to the circle of a coin. And in economics, most, by the observational data, we assume that people make choices. So, obviously, this assignment mechanism is a big deal. So, the foundational, so the role of time here, the foundational piece in the causal model, if you go back to the, I'm not sure if it's actually in the Haim's paper, but certainly in the Rubenberg. In the causal model, this is timing, this assumption. And this is how Ruben says it, one of his papers in the Journal of Education. So that Y would be the value of Y, and that's measured at time T2 on the given unit. And given that the unit received the control treatment, T initiated at time T1, where T1 is strictly less than T2. So, in the so-called Ruben causal model, treatments are clearly come strictly from the outcomes are realized. So you assign treatment, you wait, outcomes are realized. This is not always the case in games. So if you think about the demand functions, best response functions, you can think of treatments there are semitnaive outcomes. So you can think of the treatment, and I put that quotation as, you know, the price, and then the outcome is the quantity, and that's just purely untrue. But, you know, it's not, it could be true, but it doesn't necessarily be true. Okay, so what is the problem here? Well, with semitnaity, the problems arise when observations are equilibrium outcomes as models of social interactions. So think about this. The simple textbook undergraduate version of demand and supply would say, if the object of interest is the distribution of demand and supply, so this is a supply function, this is a demand function, this is a distribution order of market, so we think of this as S as a draw on market I of the supply function, you aggregate over a bunch of markets, you do this P. So now, what you do here, you're interested in S, the joint distribution of supply and demand. But the sampling process will only give you this joint distribution of prices and quantities across the market. And it's clear that, under this general condition, which is usually the causal inference models don't make, doesn't make much assumptions, but under these general conditions, it's not sufficient, knowing, knowledge of this is not sufficient to actually get the joint distribution of supply and demand. It's not even clear in this setup in general that, in fact, the data that you have, Q and P are actually two I on QI is sort of what quantity would be if we had set PI equals PI without further assumptions. So, this is very, I'll be more precise about this, but this is, obviously, for everyone that's taken an economics class, this is semitnaity. And so, an example, in causal inference literature, you know, on the other hand, you have a bunch of data on outcomes and treatments, and then here, you can think of, I'm gonna broaden up the treatment's definition by making it more look like a vector, so you can think of treatment as a vaccination campaign, in which people are given, say, coupons to subsidize the price, you know, to get them to buy cheaper vaccine in a given village, say, and a lot of the economics already have a class assignment policy, which is a treatment. You can have stake of reserve prices and ounces as treatments. But here, the difference, sort of, is that, you know, treatment's can be like vectors of treatments, as opposed to just, you know, you could give a vector of treatment for a bunch of individuals, and then you observe things right after this given. And so, just to remind you, the language of this standard Ruben causal model is, you posit this response function, which is, you could write it like this, outcome as a function of treatment, but you could also write it as a function F of T and some epsilon, which is not argued here, but it is here. And usually, the object of interest is this difference of N means. So this difference in means, where you actually set this equal to 1, minus the difference in means when you set this equal to 0. Of course, for people in this room, this is, you know, you could call this the average structural function. It's a differences, so it's a derivative of differences, this is very familiar. And this framework is agnostic about what happens between the timing. So it's, there's no talk about multiple equilibrium, there's nothing like that. So, for example, if you assign at time TI equals 1, the household I receives vaccination, between receive of a vaccination subsidy and outcomes, people could be playing games. So, if I assign a vector of treatments in a village, you know, taking a vaccination is costly, so we could play a coordination game, and it's possible that this game may have multiple equilibrium, which you can both end up getting vaccinated or neither of us gets vaccinated. But then, later on, we see outcomes, I can make this more precise, but we can still see outcomes. And as long as we have exchangeability here in the dataset, a sample will allow us to obtain the average as angles, and it's larger here if you manage to do it. So what I mean by this is, you assign a vector of treatment across villages, you have outcomes, you can still actually get the average treatment effect, irrespective of what game is played in between. Why is because if you believe that the data have the joint distribution, that's sort of this Betis theorem, then this exchangeability assumption will allow you to actually define probabilities across the observations. And if you're a betting man, you would actually be using these probability to bet on various things that come out of them. And so, if, if in fact, there is a timing assumption between treatment and outcomes, what happens if you clean, it's irrelevant, if you only care about average treatment More on this example, so I'm trying to make this clearer. We can think of T as an assignment vector, which household in village I gets a subsidy by vaccine, which one doesn't. It is likely that once T is assigned, households play game that may have multiple equilibrium. For example, in coordination game, pure strategy Nash equilibrium, everyone gets vaccinated, no one has. There's also mixed strategy equilibrium. However, learning a lot of ATD from this exchangeable sequence of literature is still possible, regardless of what happens in the game. So this social interaction games, et cetera, complicate the explanation, but not the mechanism in the game. So if you want to tell me how is it that you have treatment effect positive for this treatment versus the other, I don't know how to answer that. All I can tell you is the evaluation question. What's the sign of the path of the treatment effect? On the random assignment, we always have the worst-case bounds. So the worst-case bounds means, you know, if you don't observe, you can, you don't make any assumptions, you can always use the worst-case bounds, even if treatments, even if there is social interaction, as Chuck paper in Action Economics Journal, he uses whatever session makes this point, even if you have social interaction or anything you want, you assign a vector of treatment to observe outcomes, you still have those. We can also posit a choice model for the case when you don't have random assignment. So when you don't have random assignment, you can either do worst-case bounds, so with, so you're still within the, even with games, you're still within the language of causal inference here. We haven't really seen anything unusual. Now, what happens if you drop random assignment? So now, you have to go through a choice model, or you can do whatever Imbiss and English called a monotonicity assumption, but they're equivalent, so let's go through the choice model here. So the choice model is certainly just an assignment mechanism that tells you, given your unobservable, what treatment do you get? Okay, so this is a standard choice model. If you don't like economics or choice models, you can think of this as just, T comes about somehow, but I like to talk about it sort of somehow, but I call it the choice model. But now, I'm gonna start making assumptions, so the exclusion restriction, so IV gives you two things. Exclusion restriction just says that this outcome function, which is a function of T and C, is only a function of T. And the random assignment of the instrument says that the vector YT for all the Ts, all the values that T takes, and this unobservable V is the parameter of the instrument. Okay, so this is the standard instrumental variable setup, allowing for any difference in. So the claim now, if you actually go through this, that if in fact you have this vector T of treatment, the world estimator unfortunately, so one negative thing, it doesn't converge to a meaningful coefficient that has any causal interpretation. So I'll show you what I mean. Just to remind you, in the simulation case, the standard choice model for assigning treatment, which according to Wittlesill's paper is equivalent to the monotonicity assumption of dangerous, I'm gonna say something like this. Treatment is 1 if your type, which is the value of this unobservable, is less than this nonparametric function G of the instrument CI. G is unrestricted, and here, it's not restrictive, so since G is unrestricted, that G is in uniform zero one. And so, how do you learn from here, link the data to structure? Obviously, we have the reduced form. Usual reduced form, the reduced form are endogenous variables, expected value of endogenous variables, conditional instruments, and same thing here, endogenous variable instruments. It's simple to see that the expected value of Y given Z, Y is observed one, is the difference in average treatment, in average treatment effect, conditional on the value of the V integrated of the GZ, and this thing here. And so now, it's clear then that, I mean, you can normalize this this way, that G of C0 does not equal to G of C1, normalize and integrate one. It's clear then that, if you take this guy as C1, minus this guy as C0, or that, just look at the integral here, you're gonna get this. And so now, I just, they're taking a ratio of this object divided by the propensity score difference, then you're gonna get this causal parameter. And to many of you, this is literally almost undergraduate economics. To many of you, this looks like the causal parameter that comes out of IV, which is essentially the average, the local average treatment effect, for people, for types of people whose V lies between those two. Okay, so this is familiar. So, this is comforting, I suppose, if you are sort of used to seeing the world estimator everywhere, but now you introduce extreme heterogeneity, and you say, "Oh, wait, so I really wanna stick to the world estimator, because everybody uses it," and so you found an interpretation for it, which is the average treatment effect among this. Unfortunately, when T is a vector and you have multiple decision makers, even if V is not a vector, the meaning of the world estimator is gonna disappear. And how? So, the E here is that this monotonicity, G being scalar, divides the types in a particularly overlapping way. So what I mean by the types here, cloud G0 and G1 on an interval, and so that, in a, V is supported on 0, 1, that splits the types into three kinds, right, the compliers and different people. But what makes the geometry works here, and actually, I haven't written, but I think why I like to call this formalism, it's, one type, which is the complier, totally overlaps the other type. And so, when you do this difference in this integral, you're gonna get that this, to be, this average treatment effect to be between GZ1 and GZ0, so it turns out that you have this Buckingham rate way. Well, this overlapping idea actually does not work when you have multiple equilibrium. So you can write down a model of multiplicity, in which now, for certain types, think about the region in this 0, 1 space for the V, in which the model of assignment can tell you, you can either have T equals 1 or 0, I don't know, depends on the, depends on the equilibrium selection. Even though you can get the average treatment effect if there is random assignment, say, the world estimator now, I can write down a formula for it, the world estimator can be negative, which is devastating, if, even though the treatment effect for every individual is positive. So it's, so the world estimator, the mathematical formula, is actually converging to a weighted average of various treatment effects, but these weighted averages can actually be negative, even though the treatment effect for every person is positive. So it's converging to something, you know, it's not meaningful. What's happening here is that this multiple equilibrium violates the monotonicity, even if we have a really variable unobservable. Unless you make assumptions about how is it that every equilibrium chosen, in general, you're not gonna get this. The world estimator is not gonna really make it. But of course, you still have the worst-case bounds, so I, conclusion so far for the mapping between games and causal inference, if you have the timing assumption, which we do here, then the good news is, we can still get the ATD in a randomized experiment, with games played, and multiplicity and everything, when we have access to an exchangeable dataset. Okay news is, well, maybe in that case, you don't want to think about using the world estimator, maybe something else. Okay, so, conclusion so far, is if treatments are strictly before outcomes, then we have a whole battery of things that you can do, within the Ruben causal model, that still work, but beware of the world estimator. Okay, so now, I think it's the more interesting part, at least as far as I'm concerned, is the case in which we actually have a lot of the semitnaity. So again, I've talked about this, what, why semitnaity is important, the demand and supply, the usual models of games, where the observation of equilibrium outcomes are used to identify players' reaction functions, so here, treatments can be thought of as other people's actions and outcomes. So here, you can think of like in entry models, you can think of manipulating the entry of American Airlines in certain markets, and that actually can be done legally, you can just tell them, you cannot enter in this market, or put restrictions, or... So it's not as crazy as manipulating other people's, thinking of them as treatments, at least mentally, is helpful. Semitnaity also comes into these models of network and social interaction. The setting is problematic for the standard causal inference model, even ATDs are not problematic. And that's the point I want to make now. So here's where I wanna make the point. So I wanna make the point in the context of a binary game, in the simplest game you can ever think of. I want to show you that the average treatment effect from the causal model is useless. And here's, here's how, and this is gonna be a formal statement with a theorem, and everything is right, so to speak, to show you that even in this simple model, the language of this, of, can be problematic. So here, here, here we go. So suppose we have an sample of outcomes, you think of them as entry-like game, these are observed outcome players, so you can think of A1 and A2 as each belonging to 0, 1. So think of, think here of the setup, everything is binary, outcomes binary, treatments are binary. Okay, simplest operation you can think of. So what are we interested in, borrowing from the causal, Ruben causal model, we're interested in, you know, this is the, this is the response function for player 1, if you set player 2's action at 1. What's the probability that player 1, given player 2's action is 1, 1 is equal to 1? This is kind of confusing, because there are many 1s and 1s, but just go through it one last time. So this would be, what would, what is the probability that player 1 would play 1 if you set player 2 at 1? Okay, that's what this statement means. The same thing here. What's the probability that player 2 would play 1 if you set, this should have been 1 instead of 2? If you set, sorry, if you set player 2's, your 1's outcome to 1. So now, the question is, how do we learn about these, the average response functions, right, the properties, the average here is binary, using our knowledge of the random sample of actions across markets? This is the standard question, right? You have a random sample of actions across markets, you want to learn the response. Okay, so again, as what I said just in English, here, this here, YI is the response function for player I, evaluated at action A of the opponent. And the key problem is, how do you link that between observed outcomes and undefined best response? These are the observed outcomes, these are the best responses. Okay, so here's a question that you start, like, you start asking yourself. I have data on the table, copies of A1 and A2 across markets, data. Object of interest is YI of A. How do I link data to these YI of A? In other words, what does observing A1, A2 tell us about response functions in the presence of multiplicity, mixed strategies, non-equilibrium play, in a various particular way, assumptions whether players know others, utilities, et cetera? Okay? So, a key insight here, it's actually not true now, that observing A1, A2 implies that we observe the best response function, Y1, A2 is equal to Y1. Why? Well, if I see in the market A1 and A2, that does not mean that the best response function of Mr. 1 to Mr. 2 playing A2 is actually equal to A1, without any assumptions. That, 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 is, that's the case that implicitly is making a Nash equilibrium assumptions, mixed strategies, et cetera. Okay? Of course, in the Ruben causal model, it's taken without loss of generality, that observed Y is either this or this, depending on the identification of T. Oh, it's not true anymore here. Okay? So now, what is true? Okay, so let's discipline it a little more. I'm gonna write the game as follows. It's an entry game, so I'm gonna normalize the zeros, I have random sampling, okay, so I have this exchangeable sequence. The communications do not observe the Ys, we're interested in this. This is the key response. So, what is the identification of probability of Y1 equals 1? So we go through the famous law of total probability again. What's the probability of Y1 equals 1? Well, look at it here. So, it's the probability that Y1, 1 is bigger than 0. Well, if I condition on observing 1, 1, if I condition on observing 0, 0, if I condition on observing 1, 0, and this, these four numbers are in the data. 0, 0, 0, 1, 1, 0, and 1, 1. The unconditional, and the question is, what is 1, 2, 3, and 4? Okay? So, let's start with this one, I should go faster, this has ten more minutes. So, observing 1, 1 means that playing 1 is the best response for player 1 to some strategy of player 2. This means that for some P of the opponent's possible mixed strategy, we should have this. You see, here, if you wanna allow me to play mixed strategies, then this must be true. If you don't allow me to play mixed strategies, this is a different thing. Allow me to play mixed strategies, then that's got to be true, if, in fact, you observe 1, 1. So, you can have 5, 1, 1 be negative or positive. For this to be true, 5, 1, 1 could be negative or positive, you just need this mixture to be positive. And so, if you go through this logic, I'm gonna skip this, you can come up with this theorem right away. Nash equilibrium provides no restriction on distribution of best responses. So only Nash equilibrium, just assuming that players are playing Nash, which is actually a restriction, Nash imposes, I mean, on behavior anyway. But just Nash, with semitnaity, we cannot learn anything about the causal response functions in games without first restrictions. So the worst-case bounds come here, for these probabilities, 0 to 1, which is a big contrast to worst-case bounds in the average causal model, or the Ruben causal model, which the cops have empty service, right? If the Ys are bounded, in which, here they are, it's 0 and 1, and the worst-case bounds are actually, you know, informative, depending on what you think what informative is. Here is 0, 1, there's nothing before. So I put it in a theorem, and I actually have more cases of what happens. So, with Nash alone, we have nothing. With monotonicity, so if you assume that, you know, monopoly profits are more than monopoly profits, then that actually shinks the bounds. These ones will go from 0 to 1, to now 0, to the probability of observing only A1 equal to 1. And these bounds are sharp, even if they assume, so these bounds will be sharp, even if you assume only L1 rationality. Another one rationality just means that you're playing best responses. Okay, so these bounds remain sharp, even if you only assume L1. Now, symmetry, so this just means that there are one, the P's for 1 and 2 are the same. If you assume symmetry, then this bound actually would shrink even further. This probability now is still going from 0 to this, it's gonna go from 0 to the joint probability of A1 and A2. These bounds are sharper under Nash and L1. And if players are only pure strategies, then monotonicity would imply that this is here, these bounds are sharp. And finally, if you add symmetry to treatment, you get marginalization. So the only time you're gonna get marginalization is under... So the only time you're gonna get marginalization is under symmetry and pure strategies and not... Okay? So, if you care about the joint distribution of two and, two things, not just the marginal bounds, these are marginal bounds on this, if you care about bounds on these two objects, then under L1, the... Under L1, you don't have anything. And here, I'm assuming monotonicity. So under L1, we leave 1 of rationality, you're just gonna get the Cartesian product of individual bounds. Under L2, actually, it turns out, if you assume that people are best responding, and you're best responding to everyone else best responding, then it's gonna go from the Cartesian product to sort of a line between the Cartesian product, so it's gonna go to this. Under Nash, you're gonna get the same as in 2, and under pure strategies, you're gonna get that, the identified region for these two is the square. Okay? So what's the takeaway from this? I mean, you don't really need to know the details of how they are, they're pretty simple. But the takeaway is that even in binary games with complete information, simplest setup I can think of, causal analysis using the counterfactual notation is useless, nothing of economic model. So if, if you're not thinking of an actual model of behavior between, when you have simultaneity, you're gonna get nothing. And the way, the way I'm using the word useless is in the sense that it's not helping you learn anything, meaning the bounds are infinite. So bounds analysis is... And I'm allowing even everything to be, so here, outcomes are binary, so there's no games played, there's no support conditions, everything is simple, yet, one simultaneity is present. If you don't tell me how people are behaving, you don't add symmetry, you don't add something, you're gonna learn nothing. And it turns out that actually shape restrictions, which a lot of people in economics, of course, notice, matter a lot. So symmetry matter, monotonicity matter, but also here, what you assume on agents matter for identification. So if agents are rational, how are they rational? Are they playing Nash equilibrium? Are they playing mixed strategies? Are they playing, you know, rationalized ability? Do they want to, do you, how so? All of this will change how much you can learn. Without this, the Ruben-Coswell model, so to speak, on its own, will have no information. But of course, you know, of course, here at the end, Ruben-Coswell model did not allow for simultaneity to start with. And so, as you can see, that's pretty good, because if you allow for simultaneity... So don't take that model off the shelf and use it in a situation with simultaneity without making, without thinking of the economic model, this, it gets you out. Okay, so the last five minutes, so, I started thinking, again, thoughts here, about this. I thought about it a while ago, but then I'm revisiting it now. So a lot of people are estimating this model. Now, this is sort of like, looks like a linear regression. The only strange part about it is you're regressing your Y, and it's, it's used in social contexts, so you can think of Y as your weight, my weight, as a function of my friend's weight, and since g function is like a network matrix that weighs different people's weight in here. So people just like write this down and say, oh, let's interpret beta and this beta. So this beta, people say, oh, since your, your friends are, you know, gained some weight in the last few months, then this means that they interpret this data how much that affects your weight. So what does this mean? Okay, so there's a model, you can think of this. The parameters are unknown parameters of the model, of course, you know, you can send, yes. So, how do we think about this model? How do we interpret these coefficients? How do we raise some causal effect to above parameters? What is the relationship of this to games? So there's two views that I came up with, and here, I'm in wild, so to speak, so, there's no paper here, so this is purely a formulation. One, we view that above as a particular example of a simultaneous equation system. So, we are well within our 50-year history of simultaneous equations when we look at the model, it looks like this, because we have bars and bars. Okay? But then, what is the interpretation of the coefficients? So, if it's a, one can do the causal effect of interest may be the impact of some variable x. So you can think here, okay, you have this nasty simultaneous equation system, but you have, you have in mind a policy that changes some x, this x, from x0 to x1. And this policy could be a subsidy for healthy meals, if you care about weight, or whatever subsidy you think of. And think of x here as randomly assigned. Of course, it's not, won't be true in most applications, but for now, just to abstract away from the identification question, to interpreting coefficients. Because I don't want to do the identification question, a lot of smart people have different theorems about virtual abilities and so on in this simultaneous equation model, I just wanted to talk about, x is randomly assigned, so let's just assume that. Here, if you're gonna start treating with x prior to outcomes, then why go to this model? One should say, right? Which I would say, and I just had to have a treatment effect directly, x is randomly assigned. What is the point of writing all this if you care about the impact of x and y? Well, it turns out that if you insist on looking at this model, then it's problematic. So linking this to what's the effect of this policy is complicated. And I'll make this in a second. So this is the first view. The first view again is saying, well, I have some impact of x on y, I'm insisting that it's going through this model, how do I make sense of these coefficients? The second view, which is probably the view I think about when I look at these models, is the parameters above can be derived exactly as parameters of some utility function, and the model becomes one of a game, with the linear means model being the best response function. So, I think of, when I look at this, I say, well, you've got to have in mind a game, because if you have in mind something that the impact of x on y, then why won't you do this? You must have some kind of simultaneous, you know, demands of i, but most in game. If it's a game, then it makes sense to think about these best response functions as outcomes of the peer's i are manipulated. So now, when you think of it as a game, then you can think of, then this makes more sense, this parameter here, which is, you know, in your utility function, what happens if you change other people's outcome? So it's like sort of a best response function to a, in a utility game. Okay, so let me go through a little bit more detail about what I mean. Okay, so if you insist on the first view, then I can show this theorem, I mean, I have formula here, I think correct, but the point of this theorem is to tell you that things are complicated in one, okay? So suppose the model above holds with this assumption, this was the error term. So here, it's assuming that the network itself is exogenous, I don't have to assume that, but I just did it for illustration. In general, the marginal effect of x, which is something you could have gotten by doing this AT, is actually complicated. It's not just this beta x. So when you're sitting on a board interpreting parameters from this model, beta x isn't the marginal effect, it's not a deep point. If you go through this model, the actual derivative of the conditional expectations is beta x, but also another beta, because your x is going to other people's y's and feeding back into your y. This is a simultaneous equation system, right? You gotta solve for the y, so that's what this is saying. In fact, the effect of other people's x on your y is not only going through your own x, which is beta xk, but again, it's going through other people's x's in this, in this weird setup. The other thing is, the effect of, and this is here, you can think of it as a predictive effect or a causal effect if it's randomly assigned. So this effect of xjk is gonna be the weight of some of these weird things, and these weights are these complicated ratios of n's and number of people, and so on. The formula, those, those things aren't truly as important, I'm just telling you that if you have a view that this is, you're after the marginal effect on x, don't do this or trying to interpret data, I mean, look at these kind of nasty formulas. Um, just ignore this. The effect of changing the covariance on the outcome is generically not given by the parameter beta x. Don't try to say it's beta x and say, you know, that's incorrect. Even when this beta x is zero, the impact is not beta x. The effect of changing the covariance of individual i's peers on the outcome of individual i is generically not given by the parameter, because the change of covariance has an effect on outcome, which is intermediated by assuming interaction over it. Okay, so that's a simple point. Insist on this model, don't interpret parameters, literally try and derive these crazy formulas. If you want them, I can send them to you, but they're complicated. Now, let's go to the game. I have borrowed one minute. I'll show you where we are, so this allows, you can think of this as a game. The extra assumption of the linear means games is necessary for this interpretation as a game. If it's a game, then you have to convince people, why is it that you have the linear best responses? That's what this is saying. And the linear best response function have to have this stability, what Goldberg called in an ET interview, autonomy. And so, here's a theorem, actually, it's a real theorem, that tells you, under what conditions can you look at that model as it's actually a game? And that's the theorem. Suppose individual i would like beta i, has utility function this. Suppose that this is polynomial in y i, in particular, is such that maximizing view with respect to y follows the usual first-order, second-order conditions. Suppose the first-order condition has a neat solution, which looks like this. So this is the first-order condition from a game that has utility like this, where the types are given by these linear functions. Then, it must be that, as utility is equal to, you see, it's quadratic, the utility has to be quadratic in your own, and has this particular form, was the causal transformation, where the constants may depend on y minus i, and so on. So if you insist on estimating that linear means model, and you wanna interpret the coefficient on other people's y's as something of the best response, you must be having in mind this game. Now, what's the problem with this game? Well, it's a fine game, but then you have to convince people, why is it that the utilities are, why do I care about the average of other people's outcome? I mean, if you're studying in class, if you're a student, I'm not too sure why you should care about the average grade in your class, you know, you could care about the ranking of people's grades in your class, then you get into economics. And then you have to really think about, is this really an economic model you want? If this is economic model you want, then it's clear what these beta, beta are estimating. The best response on there is, this is a utility function. So if you, I mean, if you have the betas here and those, you have everything, you can calculate welfare, and you want to do... Okay? So let me just conclude here, sorry to give you five, five minutes. So causal inference is concerned with evaluating the impact and the impression, narrow and well-defined. So, that's the beauty of, I guess, the causal inference kind of, is that it's very well-defined, but narrow question, but everything is non-parametric, quote-unquote, and so it has this... The only problem that comes for people who are interested in economic models and simultaneously that you really think hard about what you're doing. And, so that's this one. And the next one, as a key model that makes data the response function, when you have some affinity to the standard statistic space causal model. That was all I had. Very urgent questions for, how many of you are like, you know, short question? So let's continue the field. Uh, maybe next question.
Hi, thanks, John. So this is a paper that was out of a conversation with Michi Kenemura one day, I woke home after work. We were talking about what we were working on, and it turned out, we were, we were working on two things that were actually quite similar. And so we decided to kind of connect them here in this, in this blog and paper. This is a paper about unobserved energy and auctions. It's easy to imagine that in an auction, there are things that bidders know, common knowledge among the bidders, on which the accountation doesn't observe. And this can be important to account for when we're looking for doing empirical work using data on auctions, especially so in first-price sealed bid auctions, where we not only have a problem that the structure of the data generating process reflects the presence of the unobserved energy, but that we're relying on the first-order conditions to naturally observable factor the primitives, and to write down the correct first-order conditions, these accountations need to be able to condition on the same set of information that bidders own. If we don't do this, what happens? Well, intuitively, by ignoring the fact that there's this common knowledge unobserved factor, we're gonna exaggerate the presence of correlation between what is private information on the bidders. We'll also exaggerate the variation across auctions in bidders' valuations or in their private information. But more in terms of economic conclusions, we'll exaggerate conclusions we reach about the market, how information rents the bidders have, we'll reach the wrong conclusions about what a seller should do in designing an auction, for example, how to set an option reserve price, what better bids want to begin from doing so, wrong conclusion than trying to test between competing models of auctions, like, models with private values, or models with risk neutrality or risk of risk behavior. So today, what I want to do is to first review a little bit what we know in the existing published work on, really, I'm gonna talk mostly about identification, not so much estimation, of auctioned models, first-price auctioned models of unobserved energy, and then I'll, I'll talk briefly about what Michi and I are talking about in that more home, which are two new, two new approaches. So we're gonna have one general framework, which we're gonna try to fit everything into. So it's a first-price sealed bid auction, we're gonna have a sale of a single indivisible good. T is going to be an auction that has some characteristic ct. These consist of x, z, and u. X and z are gonna be observable to the accountation, u is unobserved. X and u affect the bidder's valuations, z, which by the way, we don't always need, is gonna be an instrument for some of the approaches, z doesn't affect the valuation, so that's gonna be some kind of explosion issue. We have in, risk-neutral bidders. What do the bidders know when they're choosing what to do in the auction? They know the number of competitors, and they know all of this common knowledge auction characteristics. And for simplicity, no reserve price. Okay, a bit more notation and terminology, so we have bidder valuations, these are the utilities that the bidders would receive exposed. There's a vector of no one for each of the bidders. What do bidders know when they're bidding? They may know their valuations, but they may not. What they do know is for sure, is their signals, so this, these are the types of the bidders. And then here's something, which is slightly weird, but it shows up later. This is a particular conditional expectation, this is the expectation a bidder has, the value of winning the auction, conditional on her private information, her signal, and on an assumption that she is just tied for winning the auction. That, that turns out to be the thing that shows up in first-order conditions for bidding behavior. That's why this is, this is important to define now. So this, this general model allows special cases, so if the signal is actually equal to the valuation, bidders know their valuations, they have a private values model, in that case, this, this pivotal expectation is also just equal to the valuation. Or generally, that doesn't need to be true. If, if in general, it's the case that the expected valuation of a given bidder depends on the signals of others, then we have some kind of common values auction, or, or really it's a better terminology, interdependent values. Okay, so just a little bit on the stochastic structure, we have some joint distribution of the signals and the valuations, conditional on the auction observables and unobservables. We'll assume that this joint distribution is affiliated, you may or may not know what that means, and if you don't, I won't try to explain it precisely, particular notion of positive dependence, which allows independence as a special case, a knife-edge case. We're gonna assume the symmetric model for simplicity today, which means that we can permut the indices of the bidders and not make changes. And we have some regularity conditions, densities exist, conditional expectations exist, and a bidder's own signal is always informative. Okay, so we have equilibrium bidding, by which I mean Bayes-Nash equilibrium, and pure strategies, which are certainly increasing and differentiable. It sounds like it might be some restrictions on the model, but for the most part, these are what the equilibrium would look like, and I'm gonna talk about that. This is just notation. The equilibrium bidding strategy, this does not have an eye subscープ on it, because it's gonna be a symmetric equilibrium. It maps a bidder's type or signal into a bid that she makes, and takes as given the information about the auction, which is common knowledge on the bidders. The bidder's action is going to then be their bidding realized bid, which is the mapping of first goal to the bid. One bit of further notation, the maximum bid among i's competitors in auction t, that's called MIT, and then a bidder's problem is the following. Solve this maximization problem in a better way. Solve this maximization problem, and a bidder wins. She gets her valuation, minus what she has to pay. When does she win? With the maximum opposing bid is left on her own. And all these expectations. Okay, so how do we think about identification here? The typical primitives of interest would be, the full primitives of interest would be the joint distribution of the signals and the values. In some cases, we might be satisfied just knowing the joint distribution of these pivotal expectations. And we might want to also know the conditional distribution of the unobserved heterogeneity. What do we observe, today anyway? All the bids, the number of bidders, and X and Z, if there is a Z. But the important thing is, we don't observe U. Our problem is that bidders condition on U, but we can't. And so to see where the problem arises, we go to this really important paper by Jeffrey Huang, which is really how we got off the ground, as a researcher, thinking about identification of first price auctions. Let's take the case of private values, just for simplicity. So each bidder knows her valuation, knows the number of bidders, knows the characteristics associated with the auction. And we're interested in the joint distribution of the valuations conditional on those auction characteristics. This is just the distribution of the maximum opposing bid conditional on, uh, um, sorry, this should be D. Conditional on the equilibrium bid that the bidder is going to be making. What is this about? Because this bidding strategy is strictly increasing, conditioning on the equilibrium bid of a bidder is equivalent to a conditioning on her signals. This is just a trick, conditioning on what she knows, which is her signal. And then what the other things that she knows. Okay, so this is the belief that a bidder has about the maximum opposing bid. Okay, so now I'm rewriting that maximization problem that I wrote down before. She's choosing the bid to maximize this expected value of bidding in the auction in the first order condition that looks like this. More generally, we get something very similar, where instead of having the valuation on the left-hand side, we give some, we rely on counting values, we get these pivotal expectations on the left-hand side. Okay, so the important thing is, if we don't have any unobserved heterogeneity, then everything on the right-hand side is observable. It's data. The left-hand side is a primitive of interest, or the joint distribution of these guys is our primitive of interest. And so we get, um, identification. The problem with unobserved heterogeneity is that we cannot write down the sample analog to the right-hand side. We cannot condition on everything, because that includes the unobserved heterogeneity. Okay, so here's a useful fact for some of the results that are going to follow. If we impose a separability assumption on the valuations, that the auction characteristics separate from the valuations, then that separability is preserved by equilibrium bidding. So that the equilibrium bid that a bidder submits is going to be equal to the same gamma function multiplied by some representative bid, which represents what a bidder would have submitted in a generic auction, where we had some standardized auction characteristics. By that, I mean the characteristics X and U, such that gamma was equal to 1. Doesn't have to exist, it's just a hypothetical object. And so we'll come back to that. Okay, so one of the existing approaches in the literature is a very simple version of control function approach. This version basically takes the unobserved and makes it observable by supposing that we have some other outcome that we can condition on, and that outcome is injective, strictly increasing in the unobservable. So several papers in the dumbness, using bidder entry as the control. So imagine that the number of bidders in the auction is a function of some, uh, it's auction-specific observables X, some instrument Z, and the unobservable, and strictly increasing in the unobservable. Now, because the number of bidders is an integer, this requires that we have discrete unobserved heterogeneity. But the point is that if we condition on N, X, and Z, that strict monotonicity means that we implicitly conditioned on U, unobserved heterogeneity. So we can correctly write the first order condition just conditioning on this other observable, and that does the job of conditioning on the unobservable. We're basically creating. Do some generalizations of this. And I think importantly, one, using other outcomes as the control, which don't necessarily require the discrete unobserved heterogeneity. Strict monotonicity, though, was essential. Second class of existing approaches to unobserved heterogeneity comes from the measurement error literature. So the idea is that we want to avoid the strict monotonicity assumption that we were making in the recent control function approach, and instead, use multiple outcomes, instead of a single outcome. Use multiple outcomes, now only going to be stochasticly related to the unobservable. Such outcomes are like noisy measures of the observable U. And in fact, if we're in an independent private values world, the bids themselves can serve as these noisy measures. We made that a little more precise. So just to review something that many of you may already know, Aversi's lemma. So let's imagine we have two independent measurements of a latent variable x star. So we've got X1, which is x star plus some noise, X2, similar. And the noise is independent of x star, independent of each other. We've normalized the location of the noise without loss of zero, and we assume some technical conditions on the characteristic function. So Aversi showed identification of the joint distribution of these guys, which is, of course, made because all these things are mutually independent, just the product of the marginal distributions. And so there are lots of applications of this. Measurement error, the measurements being maybe the most common example, but there are also examples in the case of panel data and other economic applications. Okay, so Leinac, Pritzker, was the first to really adapt this insight to the case of unobserved heterogeneity in first price auctions. So let's suppose that the valuations have this multiplicatively separable structure that I mentioned before, with the unobserved heterogeneity independent of the valuations of the bidders. So by this useful result that I mentioned, we can get this preservation of the separabilities, but bids also have this multiplicatively separable form. Where the bid, again, is B zeros. We call them homogenized bids, that the bids after cleaning out the effects of the observables and un-observables. So let's consider two bidders, without loss, bidders 1 and 2, and take logs of this. So we have something that looks a bit more like Aversi. We have now two noisy measures of the unobserved heterogeneity U in logs, applied to Aversi's result. And we get the joint distribution of the unobserved heterogeneity and the two bids. Okay, and once we have that, we're basically home free. We then go back, first order conditions, plug in the things that we know to recover the joint distribution of the valuations and unobserved heterogeneity. So that's a nice result, which was generalized in the same way that there was recent work generalizing with the classical measurement error model to models without this additively separable or multiplicatively separable structure. So let's just go back to the measurement error literature for a minute. Here is a version of what Huu 2008 presented, proposed. So we have some dependent variable, which can be continuous or discrete, whatever. That's y. We have a latent independent variable, x star, we think is somehow causing y. And we have X, which is a mis-measured indicator of x star. So importantly, x star is discrete. X, the mis-measured indicator, is also discrete. There are also some technical conditions there. And then there's another thing which we can think of as yet another measurement of the latent variable x star. It doesn't really have to be, this is an instrument, it can have weird properties and still do the job. I'm not talking about the fine details of that. But it need be a mis-measured version of the x star in the way that X needs to. So what do you need? Well, I don't know what need, but sufficient, anyway. For identification of the joint distribution of all of these variables, it's a particular full rank condition and one of a long menu of monotonicity conditions. I'll wave the hands slightly because I don't want to go into the details of that. But these are, these are conditions that are going to be able to apply in an auction setting. And in fact, Huu, Gaddis, and Shon have already done this. So again, independent private values, just like Pritzker. So the valuations are independent, there's no other valuations. We have unobserved heterogeneity, but without the separability assumption that Pritzker had. Okay, so similar set of assumptions here, mutual independence. Now we have discrete unobserved heterogeneity. And to apply the result from Huu 2008, let's take three bidders now. Two, three, without loss, bidders 1, 2, and 3. We're going to discretize the bids of bidders 2 and 3. So B bars will be the discretized bids of bidders 2 and 3. Okay, so we're going to leave B1, the bid of bidder 1, as a continued. B1 is going to be like the y before. B2 is going to be like the X before, and B3 is going to be like the Z before. Okay, so we're going to make a monotonicity assumption, which is actually quite nice here. It's just saying that the valuation of any bidder is increasing in the unobserved heterogeneity in the sense of first order stochastic order. So then we apply Huu 2008, and we learn from that the joint distribution of each bid and the unobserved heterogeneity. Once we got that, we can plug that into the first order condition, again, using the insight of Jeffrey Huang, learn the marginal distributions of the valuations conditional on the unobserved heterogeneity. And so we've learned that whole model. And so that's my quick review of the existing approaches. Each of them has some limitations. So some culmination of, for example, strict monotonicity, the scrutiny of the unobserved heterogeneity, separability assumption, or limitation to independent private values models. What I want to talk about now are two approaches. These also have limitations, not the same as the limitations of any of the others. And maybe these new approaches offer at least an expanded choice set when we're thinking about identification results that we'd be comfortable with in different applications. And maybe they're even better in some dimensions as well. Okay, so the first one, I'm calling it a quasi-control function approach. And we can argue later whether this is a good terminology, for sure. I'd be interested in thoughts about that. So this is work that I'm doing with, uh, two, well, current student and former student, Marcelo Sanzana and Giovanni Moggiari. We're looking at our last version of the control function approach that I used previously to talk with Shon. So we have the number of bidders here, which is still a function of auction observables and the unobservable. But now, now we're assuming all the weak monotonicity in the unobservable. So we're going to start with the assumption that we got there that required us to have this weak unobserved heterogeneity gave us sort of a trivial mapping from the observable back to the unobservable. The goal here is to try and avoid the most problematic aspects of the control function approach that we used before, or some of its more attractive features, like the ability to apply it outside an independent private value setting. And something I didn't mention, but the use of instruments like C to generate exotics variation in the number of bidders, which is something that's useful for some verification testing capabilities. In fact, we'll come to that in a few minutes and make that. Okay, so we're going to impose some structure here. So first of all, um, what's the difference between these? The Z that's here disappearing over here. Okay, so this is an exclusion restriction. So this is imposing the exclusion part of Z being an instrument for other bidders. Then we're imposing in two, uh, really, really, two and three, this multiplicator structure likely having a background error. Moreover, we're assuming that this gamma function is weakly increasing in the unobservable T. So when we're getting from 2 and 3, we're getting that X and U affect the joint distribution of the signals and values only through this separable index. And then we have this weak monotonicity of the valuations in the unobserved heterogeneity. So this is connecting the weak monotonicity that we have in participation models to the weak monotonicity that we have within bidding models. We can generate this general model from a variety of specific models of entry followed by an auction. This is one that I will describe because it's motivated by the application that I'll show you briefly. So we're going to have, we're going to be looking at data from the US oil lease auctions. And we're going to have a standard entry model à la variant number 2, followed by a standard auction model. And so there's a track T, that's a piece of land on which bidders may be able to drill for oil. It has some active neighborhood tracks. So there are neighbor tracks around that given track. Some of those have already been explored. Those are the active tracks. Those are owned by some set of neighbor firms. Okay, so the number of neighbor firms can differ from the number of neighbor tracks because of, you know, who happened to have a high bid on one of the previous auctions. Firms, whether a neighbor firm or another firm, have to invest to obtain a signal and bid. There's some unobservable, which can have arbitrary dimension. It's possibly correlated with the observable depth. And it scales the valuations of the bidders through some index, which we don't have any restriction on. Okay, so some of the restrictions of the general model are showing up here. We don't require a scalar unobservable. It doesn't have to be uniform. We don't have a weak monotonicity. We're going to get all that stuff for 3, basically as normal being. Plus a little bit of wiggle and interpretation, let me know that. So we're going to have a two-stage game, where bidders simultaneously choose whether to enter, and they simultaneously bid. The perfect Bayesian equilibrium of this two-stage game. And what we get is the original model that I showed you, where U T is now this scalar unobservable, which is summarizing the effect of this unobservable of arbitrary dimension, although its interpretation varies with X. So this is something that maybe isn't standard, but for the purposes that we're going to be using it for, perfectly fine. We don't care about separately measuring the effects of X versus U. At least these conditioning variables, U and X, are like nuisance for us in the auction world. What we're really interested in are the primitives, the signals and the values conditional on those things. Moreover, this Z T, the number of distinct neighbor firms, conditional on the number of neighbor tracks, that's going to be a valid instrument, meaning that it's properly excluded from the distribution of signals and values, and it's going to provide exotics variation in participation. Okay, so I'm going to sketch the identification argument for this model. It's going to be on three steps. We're first going to identify partially, let me just pick the entry model. We're going to point identify the entry model that'll lead to a certain partial identification of unobserved heterogeneity. And we're going to push forward and fully identify the rest of the model. So the entry model is actually pretty easy. So the, this entry function, remember that the number of bidders is equal to this function where this dot is replacing the unobserved heterogeneity. This function is completely characterized by some entry thresholds, where if we fix a value of X and Z, when the unobserved heterogeneity falls in this interval, we get N lower bar bidders. And when it falls in this interval, we get N lower bar plus 1, et cetera. We observe the probabilities on each possible value of the number of bidders then, given X and Z, and that's just the length of these intervals. We can solve for all of these thresholds because we actually know the bottom and the top, there's 0 and 1 from these probabilities. And that then gives us bounds on the realization of each unobservable. For any given auction T, we know that it lies in an interval associated with that particular value of X and Z and the number of bidders that we saw in that auction. In fact, the given X, Z, and N, U is now uniform on a. Now, you could stop here and just say, okay, now we've got partial identification of a conditioning variable, we can just run with that. Think about partial identification of the auction model. Gilly would have been happy with that, I think. That was actually the direction we started going, but it turns out that's cheaper than we thought, and we needed to impose some structure. And it turns out that some natural structure could just point identification. And so we'll And so that's the direction we're going to go for today. So the way we're going to go now is to exploit the fact that we have imposed separability in the auction part of the model, and that we have variation in the location of these entry thresholds as x and z vary. So here, we're just taking the supremum of a distribution of a log bid conditional on n, x, and z. That's what we're doing here, we're looking at the highest possible realization of the unobservable heterogeneity and the highest possible signal. That's what the soup is getting. So when you look at this, you see that the x and z only show up in this part. So if we vary x and z, we can differentiate out the beta part of this. And if we differentiate those differences, we learn a bunch of differences that look like this. The value of gamma at different values of x and at different values of the unobserved heterogeneity, which correspond to particular boundaries of the support of the unobservable. This is what I think, here is the closest point that I can reach to tell you why I think of this as a quasi-control function approach. Because there's a sense in which we're going to exploit is the fact that we can use the boundaries of these intervals on which we know the unobserved heterogeneity line, help us to know what's going to harm in the auction model. Okay, we need to do a similar double difference in using gamma instead of supremum. All this is going to give us more of these differences that look like this. And as long as we have a chain that can lead us from some starting point to all the other values of x and z, we can learn, pardon, all the other values of x, and we can learn the gamma function, the x function that Shum in the bidding part of the model. So there's some suppressed assumptions that make it possible loosely. What we need are that both u and z are affecting the bidder participation. They substitute for each other, so that if I have a very unobservable, I can compensate for that with a slightly worse unobservable, for example. And then I need sufficient variation in the instrument to offset some discrete variation in the unobservable. I don't need any kind of large support condition, but what I mean roughly is that variation in z can offset the variation in u that causes the number of bidders to change by one upward down. So once I identified the function gamma, we're more or less home free. The joint distribution of the log bid, that's observable. You just fix x and n, and remember that a log bid is just the log of a homogenized bid plus gamma. Well, since we know gamma, this thing is a random variable. Let's skew it varying, I mean, here in conditioning. It's independent of this part, and it has a distribution which is now known. Because we know the distribution of u conditional on x and n, and we know the function gamma. So we need to do a standard convolution to learn the joint distribution of these homogenized bids. We only have to do that at single x, you could do that at another value of x, we'd actually get an over-identifying restriction test model. And once we know the joint distribution of the homogenized bids, we know gamma, we know the distribution of the bids. So we can plug that into the right-hand side of the first order condition to learn the joint distribution of these pivotal expectations. So the main application that we're motivated by and we're demonstrating in the paper is to testing for common values. And this goes back to this paper that I wrote ten years ago with Hanhan and Masham, where we had the insight that we could use exogenous variation of the number of bidders to distinguish between private values and common values. The data that we have comes from Hendricks and Porter. All US offshore oil and gas lease auctions held between 1954 and 1983. This cut-off data is important because the auction regime changed drastically during Reagan era here, and the auction basically went to hell. So this is a nice period in terms of data, or if you make better sense of it, although with Rob and Kim, we're trying to make sense of the later data now. With private values, this is a result from Hal and Shum, Yehal and Shum. Variation in the number of bidders, if it's exogenous, doesn't change the distribution of a given bidder's pivotal expectation to expect to value winning the auction. That's because with private values, this pivotal expected value just is valuation. The number of bidders doesn't change its valuation. With common values, different story. The pivotal expectation, what the implications of conditioning on the event that you're tied for winning at is a different conditioning event depending on how many bidders you're competing against. Knowing that you're tied for winning out of two bidders is different from knowing that you're tied for winning out of 100 bidders. When you're tied for winning out of 100, and there's the 98 guys who have a more pessimistic view of the auction than you did. And that bad news causes you to rationally lower your expected value of winning the auction. And the implication is that we have a first order stochastic dominance ordering of the distribution of these pivotal expectations. The larger the number of bidders, the lower are these expected values. That's what we're going to look for. Okay, so the way that we're going to implement this is in a two-step approach. So we're going to start with a parametric or could be semi-non-parametric. What I'm going to show you today is ordered proof, but we've done it with the Cholomnishka style order entry model, where we estimate these entry thresholds, these towels. Then we think these towels is known, and we're going to do some parametric passing likelihood. Where we're going to specify a parametric form of the index function gamma. We're going to be non-parametric about the marginal distribution of the homogenized bids. We're going to use Verissimo polynomials there. We're going to specify a parameter copy of chance basis that's going to be Gaussian. Obviously, some of this stuff we can relax and explore, plus this too. Easily, and other things would be more difficult. Okay, what I'll show you first is what happens if we apply the test. Well, I'm not going to show you a formal test. In fact, I'm only showing you confidence intervals. I'm showing you the point estimates of the CDFs of the valuation of these pivotal expected values conditional on different ranges of the number of the bidders. So we've split the number of bidders into different bins. And if we don't control unobserved heterogeneity, what you see is kind of a mess in terms of order. There's no stochastic ordering, they don't lie on top of each other the way that they should. In a private values model, they're not ordered monotonically in the way they ought to be in a common values model. So when we apply our technique, you see, as we go from low number of bidders to more and more, we have this kind of just shockingly beautiful. I mean, this is what it came out the very first time when we scared people to touch it. But this is not a result of fishing. And it could be that further fishing will make this fall apart, although actually, we did fish around later and never found David, it was fall apart. This looks really like what you would expect to see under the common values hypothesis now. We need to construct confidence intervals around these things, or construct a test statistic. We're still working on inference, we think we're going to be able to do this. It's a little bit tricky for to verify that, so we're working on that. Okay, so finally, I'm going to talk about a different approach. And this is from Luici and our student, Luis Laga. They're coming at this from the perspective of finite mixtures in a regression framework. They're looking at a framework that looked like this. We have y, not a variable, which depends on x and u. U is observable, takes on a finite number of values. And then there's an error term. This error term can depend on u, that's going to be important. Okay, I'm not going to go through what I gave you before. Before our result was already in just a sketch, and here I'm going to give you even more hand-made sketch. But the key conditions for identification are that the epsilon is independent of x and you got with u. That when we look at this index function gamma as a function of x, there is a segment in which these various gamma changes change u. Okay, so let me say that again. We have a bunch of these functions corresponding to the different values of u. There should be a segment of x where those functions are not parallel. Finally, there's some regularity equations in terms of characteristic functions or homogeneous functions of the e's, the epsilon u's rather. So what's the result? The result is that this regression function, the distribution of the epsilon, and these mixing weights are non-parametrically quantified. Okay, so how are we going to take that thing, which it's not obvious that that translates to an auction model, but how are we going to do that? So let's look at following structure. So this looks a lot like what we had in the model in the paper that from me and my students. We have this multiplicatively separable structure. Given the number of bidders, the signals are independent of x. The support of u now is going to be discrete. Okay, so like the previous approach, we have this separability between the x and u, and the, well, it looks like the x and u, and this pivotal expected value. But here, this thing is still allowed to depend on u. That's something that we didn't allow in our approach. That's actually relaxing the index structure relative to what we had in the control function. This is the quasi-control function approach and what was seen in the case of the measurement error approaches. It does require discrete unobserved heterogeneity, but compared to the measurement error approaches, we're avoiding the restriction to the independent private values. That's some attractive features. Okay, so how do we get this to look like an auction? How do we transform the auction model to make it look like the regression model? That's a good question. So first of all, I'll just point out that the useful result on separability still holds. So we still have this separability of the bids into this homogenized bid and then the index. Let's fix the number of bidders. And we're going to take an arbitrary vendor, which has the same dimension as the number of bidders. And we're going to construct a linear combination of the log bids. Okay, so the log bids, those are observables. We made up these numbers C, so this is a thing that we can construct. It's essentially data. What is that equal to according to this preservation of separability? Well, it's equal to the sum of those constants multiplied by the index plus some of those constants multiplied by the homogenized log bids. So I've just rewritten it in the following way. This is just a number, this is a new function of x and u, and this is another number. So now we're getting something that looks like the regression model. Okay, so I've just rewritten that here. We applied a general Laga result. What we learn is for any value of these constants C, and for each one of the possible values that unobserved heterogeneity takes on, we learn the value of this function, we learn the mixing weights, and we learn the distribution of this linear combination of the log bids. Okay, we know what C is. So if we know what C gamma is, that means that we know what gamma is, so we've identified gamma. Moreover, all of these constants were arbitrary. So we've learned the distribution of every possible linear combination of these log homogenized bids. So by compare wall, we did the joint identification, the joint distribution of these homogenized bids. And now we're home free. This is just like before, once we have the distribution of the homogenized bids, the index function, we can plug all that back into the first order conditions and get the implication of the bidders of the model. Okay, that was a lot to swallow. I think the idea was to give you a sense of what the state of the art is and the ways in which we're trying to add something to the frontier of what's available. You know, why do we think this is important? We think auctions are an interesting frontier for a variable word, both because auctions are interesting themselves in ways that maybe people didn't really anticipate when this literature began thirty years ago. But because we have a particularly good idea of what the model should be, what bidder's objectives are, we can often really push in terms of econ metrics and in terms of what kinds of richness we can allow on the model, whether it be unobserved heterogeneity, risk aversion, asymmetries between players, relaxed notions of rationality, equilibrium, et cetera. Today, I was talking about one part of that frontier which you can think about market-level heterogeneity. And there are several approaches to non-parametric identification. These use insights from broader class of models. So the notion that we might have an exact measure of the unobserved heterogeneity, a particular version of the control function approach, this idea of seeing noisy, multiple noisy measures of the unobservable in identification by that mixture model. All these are things where we're really taking results developed for other kinds of models and seeing how we can apply it to the auction picture. This quasi-control function thing, okay, not only do I not know what this is proper need for, but I'm not yet sure whether this is an idea that, okay, it might even exist somewhere, but I don't think so. And even either way, I wonder what the possible applications are. I think it's an idea that should in principle be habitable elsewhere, where we can infer bounds on the unobservable. And moreover, we can see how those bounds move with observed unobservable and use that fact to learn. That's all I wanted to do with this structural feature.